Welcome to the United States of America. And I should recall that we're watching this again. But what we're showing is that they're on the difficult, good, worthy to be in the top two.
All right, welcome everyone. We met in executive session for thirty minutes prior to this meeting to talk about personnel and some other matters. And tonight, both Mr. Sutter and Dr. Grant are excused from the meeting. Let's see. High School Student Council, you want to come to the podium?
We've seen you all, but we wanted to just come and give some updates about the student government. What do they have up to? So since we presented to you last October, can't believe it was that long ago. We've done a lot of events around the holidays in the winter. We first of all gave personalized gift cards and fancy cards to all of the staff that volunteered for our homecoming celebration. We hosted a door decorating contest for all the homerooms with a winner in each grade with a trophy for them. That'll be a tradition that will continue every year. We had our secret dragon or like Secret Santa style event with the staff. We had sixteen student council members and fourteen staff members participate in a gift swap and then a breakfast the last day before school. And we also did a group shopping trip for the supplies for the first time. So student council actually purchased the gifts for the first time this year. Rather than having that be on the students. We had more participation this year than we've seen before. Holiday spirit days, pepper alley on Monday, all the full winter break. But now in the new year, we have a new structure. We're introducing more of our like committee based system than in the past. That way we don't have as many full council meetings that are still getting stuff done. We've had over a dozen meetings across all the committees since then. And classes have been fundraising for events like the Roman past trips. On March fourteenth, in this room, we had our blood drive. We had twenty-four units donated a great experience with the Red Cross. And Domino's donated ten pizzas to us, which we just delivered a thank you note to them today. We had a staff luncheon on March seventeenth for St. Patrick's Day. We had a catered lunch by the Gunsies hot sausage and desserts by student council members. And then looking ahead, we have student council elections coming up in April. So that means my time will be over and you'll be seeing someone else up here next year. We'll have class elections in May and then sometime before AP testing, we're going to have a Mr. Lewis, we're going talent show and patches for the student body. As well as making a larger purchase for homecoming, like some kind of photo booth setup or some kind of food or concession items, since we do have quite a bit of funds that I think we should be using for a long term purchase. So yeah, that's our updates. We've been busy and we're looking forward to finishing up the year.
Thank you. So you said a photo booth is a long term purchase, like you would buy a photo booth that would be in the building somewhere?
Yeah, so the exact things we're going to buy or not put in term, yeah, but the idea would be a photo booth that or some kind of, you know, little like device to take a photo. That could then be used for dances. So I don't think it would necessarily be a permanent fixture within the building, but it would be used by different classes, different events. Just because the student council could love out to people in the building.
Is it, we think, are you imagining something portable enough that it could also go to the middle school?
Oh, that's a good idea. I think portable enough that it can be like stored in our student council closet would be the idea. So again, any student group position, you think that we would be more than happy to look out again. Once this is purchased, the committee for homecoming is working on it right now.
So what are some of your other committees? Committee on Homecoming, you mentioned, I mentioned prom as well.
Yeah, so we actually have four overall committees and student council. Prom is actually a class function, so we're not in charge of the prom. We just do the homecoming dance. We have four overhaul committees, so that's going to be homecoming and student services. So that's like general one, like student engagement. We have the social media committee that's in charge of our Instagram and Facebook pages and maintaining that. We have, let's see, on the list here. There's quite a few and it's a new structure this year, so we have more than enough to go around. And we have a staff appreciation and staff services committee that runs like the breakfast and the lunches. As well as a club outreach committee, trying to just document the clubs that happen in the high school, work with the clubs if they need grants for their activities, or if they just want to like promote their club to the wider student base. And then within each committee, we have some subcommittees for civic events, like for homecoming, blood drive, Mr. Lewisburg, I have a civic engagement committee that's going to be doing voter registration stuff here in the spring. As well as like civic holiday events and look at different staff meals and.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Thanks for coming. All right, now we're on to citizens comments to the board on agenda items. Do we have anything online today? Do we have anything from the audience? We have board action, making the old business, which is the high school turf field lighting and sound proposal where we have options to consider and you want to walk us through our options for what your recommendation at this time, given the information that we have?
Sure. There's multiple options on there, but recommendation would be for turf lighting and sound. There's also options on there for roadway lighting, which possibly could get covered out of a grant in the future. There's also a proposal on there for tennis lighting. But again, at this time with the additional funds, we wouldn't recommend that right now unless there would be some kind of donation or campaign that would happen from that. So the recommendation would be turf lighting and sound.
Thanks. How how late do you think we could have more information about tennis to make that happen in the short term with this same project? Or do you think it's?
There's a, there's a process to get it approved. There would be probably like a ten week process before it could be installed. If it was in the next week or two, three weeks, it could probably be done at the exact same time. But there would be manufacturing also needed for those lights as well. So but it could be a change order in three, four weeks from now if we wanted to add tennis.
And our quote still holds through?
Yeah, I can check if there's a date on there, but, but I mean, we've done change orders and work. Other items, and I think I could, I mean, we could find that out. We could ask that question to see how long we could potentially look at the other options.
Do you think there was a date on the quote somewhere, like this is good until, maybe that was on a previous thing?
Pricing invalid for thirty calendar days from the date of the problem. That's the same thing.
Oh, yeah, where's the same thing?
You live with you.
I'll look at my computer later. Okay, can I take a motion to approve the turf field sound, the lights and sound? And we'll hold on tennis and roadway. Moved by Dr. Graham.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kraus. Any further discussion? The idea would be if we can identify something in the very short term for tennis, that's still a possibility.
That'd be great, yep.
All right, I think we're ready then.
Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
Dr. Maddis.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our next item is the Lewisburg Studio Photography Agreement. And so Kathy, can I put this more information on that?
I do. This is the Lewisburg Studio contract that includes the senior photographs taken for the yearbook and the sports team, as well as individual photos as well, taken by Lewisburg Studio. It is a revised contract that opens up the agreement to allow individual teams to seek out photographers for banners and yard signs and other options they may want. While what remains intact is the photography for the yearbook and the district scheduled team photos with Lewisburg Studio.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Dr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kraus. Any further discussion? Okay. This is the contract, yeah.
Dr. Mattis.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our next item is the
Lyons.
The Lyons. Yes, sorry. Let's give a pause for a second. Are we all, we're good? I don't want to jump to the next decision. We're good. Okay. Our next item is the NITNE Learning Services, which is a per diem rate for student attendance at the at this option.
Okay, so new to us is to work with NITNE Learning Services. It's what's known as an AEDY program, Alternative Education for Disruptive Youth. There are three locations. Two years ago, they came closer to us with a site in Sunbury. We have found their program to be very solid. It is therapeutic as well as educational provision. Most sites ask districts to sign a simple service agreement. It is not the contract in the respect of a set fee or an automatic price that is ours to pay. It's a pay as you use on a daily basis. And we would like to include this particular AEDY site, not only for its proximity, but Mr. Hoover and I went and met with the individuals involved, reviewed the tenants of the program. I will tell you, a number of our neighboring school districts made use of it also. Very small class sizes, group and individual therapeutic sessions. Every eight weeks, the student is reassessed and reevaluated. And therefore, the turnaround to possible return to school district is there with a number of eyes reviewing and assessing this being and their success in the program. Because this is our initial time and opportunity to work with them, I ask that we approve their service agreement.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve? Move by Ms. Lyons. Second, second by Ms. Kraus. Any further discussion?
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
Dr. Mattis.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, our next item is our three thirty-nine plan, which has to be updated on every three years. And so do you want to tell us a little bit more about what's new?
I can just pull it up here as well, give you a visual. The last few months, the counseling team and myself have worked on pulling this plan together, which talks about, typically it's called the guidance plan, but this is kind of renamed it to the career and counseling plan. It focuses on a lot about how we collect career artifacts, as well as outlines what our counselors do in their role. In this past Monday, we had a counseling advisory committee breakfast and had a great turnout for that. And our counselors walked our committee through the plan as well as kind of what they do in their role. And this plan is the culmination of that. And approval tonight would then allow us to submit it to the PDE for approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Dr. Graham, second by Dr. Mattis. And any further discussion or questions? Right.
Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons.
Yeah.
Dr. Mattis.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. On board information, our first item is about the playground asphalt replacements. It's something we'll vote on in a future meeting. If you want to maybe introduce this, gather any of anyone's questions?
Sure. So we, I mentioned before to you that, well, this past summer, we had our playground installed at Kelly Elementary. And over this course of the school year, the surfacing didn't adhere real well to our asphalt. And there was some cracking in some certain areas. And so they have been able to tell us that they're going to come back this summer to replace the cork with a cord rubber. And it's to be a good time to also replace the asphalt that is a big part of that playground as well. Because it would be adhering to it. And so we have before you, for information, a proposal, a KPN proposal through Gordian to do asphalt work. There's some subgrade in there. There's some some site improvement there because there was a little bit of drainage that was making the asphalt that'd be great right by the entrance in the playground back into the school. And so the prices are there for this project. It would be kind of in conjunction with the replacement of the certain playground surfacing itself.
This is the same company that's doing the playground surfacing?
It is not. This is the actual subcontractor would be Contilius who did our tennis courts and our parking lot out back here. It's KPN is the vendor is Gordian and then Clark Contractors is involved there too, because they have the KPN contract. Contilius would be doing the work, the local company. Doing the work for the playground itself is no fault. Is the company that does the surfacing for, for that.
I guess, I guess maybe my question is, is all of it falling under the same general contractor? Like, is all of the work falling under the same?
It's two separate projects, so it's kind of a lot of coordination between the two. And we kind of wrote that into it that they would be coordinated with each other.
Right.
So first, they would come in and they would take out the cork surfacing, pull all of that out, and then the asphalt contractors would come in, take our asphalt, replace with new. And then they would come back, the original contractor, no fault, would come back and put in the playground surfacing next to it.
So is this the only quote that we have?
Yeah, the other one is being done at no cost. So this is the, this is the proposal for the asphalt itself. Which is in between two sections of playground equipment, which has the surfacing on it.
This is the only quote we have for the asphalt?
Yes, it's a free bid.
Yeah, so maybe if you explain KPN.
So it's a, it's pre-bid, so we could also take this out to bid as well. It's a purchasing network agreement, so yeah, there's multiple ways to go about it, but this would allow us to utilize a contractor that we're familiar with, with their work and get a quality product right there about that art.
So for a future voting item, our next thing up is the middle school asbestos abatement proposal. This is a removal. And we saw a little bit of this in previous meetings. This is just for our awareness and if anybody had any additional questions, or is there any new information?
So this one's mine to share with you, and again, information tonight. But think of the middle school built nineteen sixty-four. The original tile is down in our classrooms. Delbert estimates four to six to ten heavy coats of wax over our tiles. But in time, the adhesive beginning to give way and loosen. And in rooms five, six, and eleven, some of that adhesive loosening requires us to certainly then take this kind of action in the effort to repair. And so this asbestos abatement is the first of three quotes that we will have. But it is under the threshold. It is the company we have used previously for the abatement. And I'm using this to show you tonight that this too needs to be on our planning of capital projects would be done this summer. And it does not include the new flooring that we should investigate and look to put down in these three classrooms. So it's first extended awareness of the scope of the job that we're looking at tonight.
So we have used them before?
We have.
And we didn't have any trouble?
No, good company, which is why Delbert went there immediately.
I only ask because and I can only speak from my own experience, but a lot of the workers that work for some of these programs are actually trained in prison settings because it's not a very popular job and it's a very high paid job, generally speaking. So a lot of the reentry programs actually train inmates, so. And we were in former prisons that I worked in, we ran into the problem of background checks for the workers to actually come in. And I, and I know that we have kids in our buildings in the summer, so that's asked.
Good. Make us aware.
We could avoid having kids in the middle school, is that what we're concerned?
The jury.
For the jury shop.
Well, it may or may not be a concern. I just, and, and I can't say that absolutely every company I just know, no one's had federal contracts intended to be that way. And generally, we made exceptions because we needed the work.
Our next step is a board presence report. I'll keep it very brief.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? It's gonna be a dumb question, but I just feel like I have to ask it. Like, is the asbestos currently, like?
No.
Is there any safety issue at all?
None. No.
It's the case of it. It'd be weird if nobody asked that question.
And I could have offered that.
It's becoming dangerous when you disrupt it. So it's better to do it when everyone's out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So to give some updates on Green Dragon Foundation, the strategic initiatives committee met the other evening and we talked through three proposals that came from teachers for different initiatives. And then next week, we have our GDF board meeting where we'll talk about sort of some, some broader things. And sort of the conversation continues because GDF really is committed to reflecting our priorities. And so as we continue to have some of these capital projects come up and some of the other nice to haves that we discussed come up, Kathy and I will keep bringing that to the Green Dragon Foundation. But if there's other things that the board identifies as have we considered this? Is this some, you know, a type of project we could do together? We can bring those as well. And the district put in an application for everything that we have in Green Dragon Foundation fund. All right, Vince, you're up.
I'll be brief as well because I'm presenting later, but I did want to give a shout out to Mr. Schwanger and Mrs. Ishad for Tred Manza this week. Over two hundred and fifty students involved that came during the day to do like all day band rehearsals with the high school students. And so we had fifth grade through twelfth grade working on that. And the concert in the evening was, was great. And two hundred and fifty kids on the stage at the very end was a really cool performance. And so I just enjoyed that and enjoyed their work and, and they're really growing their program, which is great to see. Also got to see the second grade concert over at Kelly Elementary on the eighteenth. And I was, I was blown away by the preparation for those kiddos. Mrs. Dohle, Mrs. Kirsh is a fantastic job of preparing their kids. And like always, it's standing room only. So two great music events that I got to be a part of.
Was it here or was it in the cafeteria?
Cafeteria in Mary Kelly, yes.
Yes.
Could we schedule things so we don't have to have things in the cafeteria just for future, or do you think kids like to show up their school?
I think so. And kids are familiar with that setting. I think we can get some additional chairs there. We actually have some stairs, some chairs in storage that we can bring over to Kelly that have some additional seats there. And so I mentioned that to Eric and he would be willing to have a couple more seats because but again, a great event and everybody comes out for it. So it's good.
You said a word that, that makes our ears light up. Did you say storage facility?
In our maintenance shed area warehouse. On shed in our maintenance across from central office in the town. We've got some shares that we can take over to Kelly.
I will get used to that. All right. Any board needs on meeting reports? Anyone have a meeting or a Pat Talk meeting?
I'm actually heading this CSI U, but I haven't seen that before.
Do we have a, do we get a handout from them anymore or something to attach? No?
I'll mention with respect to some, I think it's common knowledge. But with Mr. Barker leaving at the end of the school year, they are in their active search process for their new administration.
All right, on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve with the revised personnel report that we got earlier? Moved by Ms. Hanos, second by Ms. Lyons. All right.
Can I just ask a quick question from the policy, the first reading, right? Anything major changing on your views?
This is the grade classroom.
I think Josh's presentation at the last meeting, it's a Latin honor system and we needed to reflect that in the one. And it's the over time readjustment of high school graduation credits that we captured in the two policies.
Okay.
The meeting that afternoon began good discussion in two other areas, including the cell phones that we started to examine. And I'll say the other was our acceptable use policy that may need to be revised. There's new concerns, cybersecurity as well as devices to reexamine. So we began some discussion in that direction, knowing it will take more than one meeting to work through.
You know what we could think about doing is we can just put the minutes appended to board information, please, on committee reports and just have the the minutes of the policy meeting there. Okay.
And if, I mean, if it would be possible to just highlight in policy what was changed. So that
That would make it easier.
At one point, there was track changes.
Sure.
Any other questions? Yep. Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
Dr. Mattis.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Motion carried.
You did.
Are there any citizens comments to the board on non-agenda items? Okay. So with that, we have do we want to do director's comments or do people, would people like to move on to the, the whole portion of the meeting? We'll need to talk about whatever we want. Moving on. Okay, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the working, this part of the meeting. Moved by Ms. Lyons.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kraus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is part of the meeting is adjourned. We'll now move to the committee of the hall. I'm expecting to switch myself around here.
Right. I was learning this, I learned this.
All right.
Mike, can I just make a quick informal, we're having some conversation with folks on the county. I learned that not only is it a Geisinger, potentially a Geisinger Cancer Center that's going in on, but also the Commonwealth Cyber Charter School. Potentially. And so that may be something that we want to have some conversation with them.
Is it an office? It's like an office, just an office, right?
Two, so the plan was for, the way I understand it, the plan was for two office buildings. They go on that site, one for Geisinger as the Cancer Treatment Center and the other for the Pennsylvania庇护学校. So all of it would be non-taxable property, right? Like we need more of that here. So just something for us to consider and think about, perhaps to bring to our community, community relations.
Yeah.
Have some conversation about that.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
I'm going to call to order the working group part of the meeting and we're going to have our first, our presentation is going to be on comprehensive plan, goal number three.
Yes, Mr. Richmond is going to join me in this presentation. We're going to kind of tag team through the slides and Kathy, I'm sure we'll chime in as well. Yes, we're looking at goal three today and I just want to remind you of our goals that we've already covered. We've looked at goal one on student learning. We talked about that a few, few months ago. We looked at Uh, we looked at safety and well-being. Um, last month, we did expected communication and which is goal five. And now we're going to goal three, which is inclusive practices and how we cultivate inclusive practices into our schools. Uh, making sure we have student voice and making sure that students feel like they belong. So I'm gonna, gonna cue you up here, uh, Mr. Richmond, our director of special ed, and he's gonna move these things off of the slide here. Um, but our first objective listed here is how do we make sure that we're enhancing on the experience of our services for our special ed? Uh, stu- students as well as our English language learners. And so Mr. Richmond is gonna speak to, um, our special ed side of it, and I'll talk a little bit about the English language learners in just a little bit. Um, so, Mr. Richmond, I will let you think over on this slide.
Sure, so just wanna start off with this, a little information, uh, based on our December one account. Uh, every year, uh, the special ed department scrambles to gather all our pieces together and they get a child count living for, for billion purposes. And, um, you know, you know, to gain information and understanding of how our population of special ed is changing, we're staying consistent over time. Uh, so what we did is I, I put together, uh, Mr. Hoover, we have a visual here, kind of what makes up, uh, the special education population. Uh, for our students that are under the, um, non-gifted umbrellas of, of the special education here. Uh, you see, we have a total of three hundred and twenty-two students, kind of a nice visual breakdown there for you with the statistics on the left. Obviously, our biggest area is gonna be specific learning disability, uh, that's a makeup generally of students that have a specific learning disability. And, uh, some type of reading, uh, skill or math skill, kind of what makes up the basis of that. Then we get into other health impairments, which is Mr. Motto's favorite one of all of them, which is kind of a catch-all. Uh, where if they don't qualify for, one, one of the other categories, we can kind of work it in there. Uh, you can see I won't go the whole way down, but you can see speech and language highly represented emotional disturbance. A population that we're very aware of and our programming we've been working on. Uh, autism, that goes intellectual disability, multiple disabilities, or orthopedic impairment, traumatic brain injury, and unhearing impairment. So it's just kind of a nice breakdown, uh, of that, you can visually see our numbers, we have a total, uh, that number's always moving, always changing. Students being dismissed, uh, new students being identified, students moving in, moving out. But as of, uh, December first, our count, we had three hundred and twenty-two total non-gifted special ed students as part of our program. Uh, with that, and I should say non-gifted that don't carry a dual exceptionality where they're gifted and, um, one of these areas. So that they were due exceptional, they could fall, they could be represented in this data as well, so. Uh, just to kind of give you a little bit, any questions on the makeup, it's kind of just a nice visual of our district and kind of, you know, what our needs are at this time. All right, so Mrs. Moser and I meet every Friday, we spend a lot of time talking about, um, kind of the continuum of services. And wherever this bird is and where we need to be, uh, and a lot of that, we, we've kind of looked at needs. Uh, you know, as the school year has changed, looking at our early intervention students that are coming in. And we've, uh, have a proposal here, uh, to make some, just some adjustments, uh, to our continuum of services, uh, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Uh, the, I'll just kind of go building by building if that's okay, and I know you've seen this before, and I'll just kind of highlight the changes for you along the way. Uh, so looking at Kelly, uh, we're still looking at having our, uh, C S I U autistic support classroom. The classroom has been, uh, tremendously successful, uh, with great staff in there. Um, and then moving over, we are looking just to adjust the roles of our emotional support and learning support teachers a little bit. To be, uh, more conscientious of their efforts to build capacity, which I'll talk to a little bit more about that here shortly. Uh, but we're looking to have one of our teachers who's been working with emotional support students. Uh, add to her rostering a little bit of supplemental learning support, so those are kind of your in-between students. That wouldn't be quite, you know, like a life skills autistic support placement, but they're not quite ready for, uh, supported inclusion. For some core topics inside of the regular classroom. Uh, and then we have, um, our K one learning support program, second grade learning support and third grade learning support. So we're really trying to, uh, balance out, uh, our case managers and have them, uh, working towards specific goals. Where they're not duplicating services, which I'll talk to another slide here shortly. Uh, Lindtown is where we're seeing, uh, uh, a change is we are, um, we put a request in for a transfer of entity. Uh, from the C S I U autistic support classroom. Uh, Mrs. Rose and I worked through kind of that process and really looking at our valuable personnel, we're really confident that it was, it was a great time for the district to. Um, look at bringing that classroom back into the district, uh, so that's a change, it's not green like it was last year. Uh, and then we're looking at a similar approach that we have at Kelly, so we have a really consistent continuum of supports for students. Uh, one of the positions that, um, we're hoping to advertise for would be the emotional support supplemental learning support position. Again, just like the one at, uh, Kelly, it's emotional support, providing, you know, behavioral supports for students that need it. Um, within special ed or in regular classrooms, as well as that supplemental role for those kind of in-between students that don't quite fit the mold. Learning support, uh, life skills programming, but then also might need something more than we can provide within the core instruction within the kindergarten. Now, and of course, we have fourth and fifth grade learning support teachers as well that would carry on, uh, with their purpose. Uh, the middle school, um, not, not much is changing, we're just defining our roles a little bit. Uh, we are looking, uh, continuing our life skills autistic support programming. Uh, we had two teachers that were working in tandem this per current year, uh, towards servicing students within that, uh, realm. Uh, what we found is we can actually build capacity and address some of our other needs by shifting some responsibilities with our teachers. So we're gonna have a classroom for life skills and autistic support students. Uh, and then we're going to, uh, move the, the other teacher into a more focused role for supplemental learning support and life skills. So she's gonna kind of work with, again, in-between students and students that might need, uh, might be more academic in the regular ed setting. Might be, might be more included for core academics, so we're trying to balance with, uh, those staff. And of course, then we have our emotional support programming, which our numbers do increase at the secondary level, uh, we start to see, uh, larger numbers. Uh, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth grade learning support. Um, and then when we get to the high school, I, the high school is pretty much remaining the same as it was last year. Um, we have work foundations, uh, available to us to serve, uh, for our autistic support students as well as our life skills. Uh, and then we're gonna have two emotional support classrooms at our high school, as well as two, uh, learning support classes, as well as support, um, core areas. Uh, as well as, um, uh, supplemental learning support in math and reading areas as well. Um, so any questions on the, in district programming?
So we're looking at a plot of three hundred and twenty-two kids and we're looking at approximately twenty options for supporting them. Maybe a little, a little bit more with the, um, off-site placement. Can you give us a sense of sort of the numbers of kids that are receiving, for example, gay first grade learning support? Is that, uh, a kid that's going to see a learning support teacher every day, they're always in that classroom? Just a sense of how much time is spent in that environment versus in the regular classroom, tricked across the grid?
That's a great, that's a great question, so it really is totally individualized on the student and their needs, right? Uh, I can walk you kind of through the options, generally, at Kelly, uh, much of my spirited conversation with the teachers and so on is inclusion as much as possible, right? I, um, we have led a charge administratively with teachers involved as well, uh, to lead into our M T S S model. More for students, even if they're identified for special ed, allowing them to still access to their core. Because what we were having was some students being pulled out, missing core for reconstruction, we're trying to lean back into M T S S as part of that. Uh, but generally, it comes down to, um, if the student does not need remediation in math or reading. Directly from a learning support provider or learning support teacher, they'll get that core instruction in the classroom. But there are students that need that supplemental that even the regular ed moves at a faster rate, uh, than what they can, you know, what's appropriate for them. For their pre-appropriate public education, so we pull them out and work on their settings. Um, so it can, it can vary, um, the, most of the students that are at, like, say, K- Kelly. They're definitely more, uh, in boarding support, they tend to be more itinerant, which means they're, uh, only out around twenty percent of their day or less. Uh, for, for learning support services.
I think for a lot of us who haven't had kids in elementary school for a while, uh, we're not super familiar with the win time. If you could share a little bit about how that works for the kids?
So win time is, is, is a, is a regular ed time, but it's something I've leaned into because it really helps out, um, the special ed programming and kind of how we identify students. So the win time, what happens is, uh, they are used as intervention time, uh, for math and reading. Uh, and through our reading and math programs, uh, students are benchmarked and they're placed within certain instructional groups. And during that time, the students get that remediation time that they may need at their instructional level. Uh, what I love about that time particularly as a special ed advocate is it's a place where, uh, it is regular ed time where students can be involved. Our learning support teachers are teaching classes during that time, our regular ed teachers are teaching classes during that time. But it's not just a special ed or regular ed time, it's, everyone comes together for that. Uh, that's where we've been able to lean into, um, that M T S S model. And, uh, the multi-tier support system, and it's really important because as a special ed director, would you have it? Um, having a strong M T S S model allows us to kind of put a pause on would-be evaluation. So if we have a student that's in M T S S and they're making progress and they're actually hitting their goals. Um, we can work with families to kind of put a pause or a break on evaluation to see if that, those remediation efforts. Will allow that student to close gaps that they had instructionally. Uh, so really, we try to do, you know, roughly, you know, forty-five days at a time, we like to look and see. And we've actually been able to step away from evaluating students because they've been making progress in these areas and working towards great level. And further intervention wasn't needed at that time, so that's a really big win, and I think it's been a great effort as someone coming in, uh, to see it for the first time. Doing you, um, we're, we're doing, we're moving in a really positive way, uh, that's gonna impact struggling learners. And again, keep them from being identified early on as they may have traditionally been before. That answer the question?
Yeah, I mean, what's the harm in identifying them?
Well, it's, it's kind of like you don't wanna jump to an evaluation if you haven't tried. Uh, so there's different tiers of support, right? So tier one and tier two is where you, you always kind of wanna work in before you jump to an evaluation of the student. You wanna, wanna have a student come in and say, oh, they get evaluated, um, what have, what have we done? And we say nothing, and we evaluate that, we haven't, um, you know, kind of tried things to work them along to show progress at first. Uh, for example, we have students that are in our, uh, tier, tier two reading groups, uh, part of our win time. Which is a little more restrictive just because of the, the time that's involved with it, and it's a little more individualized within those groups. Uh, but those students are actually making progress, um, and if you didn't have that, you would have to just do an evaluation, stamp them special ed, and then they would go on. But they're able to avoid that evaluation process.
For a really long time, like, when you think about when we were kids, it was either. Like, if, if you were struggling, you went for evaluation and that evaluation was your access to any type of support or service. This puts the supporter service before having to reach that evaluation. And some students just through these interventions make the gains and are fine and don't need those special ed support. So it's.
Yeah.
It's putting the support before going straight to a special ed evaluation.
Especially at Kelly too, you know, those younger grades, there are so many variables that impact students' learning, right? It's like development, you know, uh, aspects they're dealing with, it could be, um, they didn't have like a quality or any type of preschool incoming. And they might be learning school for the first time when they start their first day of kindergarten, so they're behind the eight ball already. You're talking about behavior maturation and things that might go into kind of impacting them. Uh, so it's, it's a, it's been a nice way for us to look at, and part of our M T S S, and I'll just, it's like we, we, we're going, you know, um, sorry. Math, reading, but we're also working on behavioral supports as part of that, our occupational therapists have been getting involved in terms of supporting students early on. Before we get into evaluation, so we're really trying to make it a holistic approach where we have struggling students to kind of help them along before we, we get to that. So. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Um, and then, uh, we have, uh, sorry, our offsites, uh, where we look at, of course, we are still partnered with the I U. Um, we have an M E S classroom in Chicago, let me, uh, that we have a current, uh, student at. Uh, and then we also have other sites where we have five-star, uh, elementary, five-star middle school, high school, partial hospitalization programs. Detac, uh, diversified treatment alternative centers in Sunbury, uh, Soaring Heights, we have a location in Mifflin and State College. That we sent us two students to, uh, we have New Stories, uh, A D Y, which is, uh, part, you know, part of our many learning cohort there. Uh, we have the Chicago Lyme School District as well as the Milton School District where we have students placed. So it takes a village with many different, diverse, uh, placements to meet student needs, uh, for us, our continuum. Any questions on that? Okay, so, uh, what we're gonna do is we're just again looking at, uh, inclusive practices here, and I kind of mentioned this already. Uh, one of Mrs. Moser and I's focus when we meet and we talk, um, and being new to the district coming in. Was how are our staff being utilized, what are they doing? Uh, because one, we wanna make sure we ma- maximize our, um, impact of our students. Uh, and also, we wanna make sure that we're fiscally responsible with the resources and the personnel that we have, right, as part of that. So, uh, one of the things that I looked at, uh, this year and put a lot of focus on is to continue that increase of the compa- uh, capacity of instructional staff. To meet individual student needs, uh, and one of my big focuses is in this area is to make sure that staff are not duplicating services. Um, it's very hard, teachers wear many hats, uh, across the board, you know, when they're working in the special ed. Uh, add hats on hats on hats, that's what special ed teachers are doing. Um, and basically, what happens is with that, uh, capacity is if I have an emotional support teacher, uh, who has a caseload of, say. Twenty students, eighteen students, whatever it may be, um, we don't wanna lean on them to have to do reading and math instruction. Uh, at a remedial level, if the learning support teacher on that grade level is doing it, because we're duplicating services. So if they're doing it down the, you know, right down the hallway, it's only one or two students that they'd have to support. All right, you would need to, uh, have those teachers sharing that instructional capacity, uh, to work with our students. And not just because their case managers having to be work, but just their students. So it's gonna allow us to, uh, diversify our efforts, uh, and become, you know, more, uh, masters in certain fields. And, and working with regular ed teachers to make sure we're giving the best curricular opportunities for our students. So that's one of the ideas we're looking at, uh, to do that. Um, another one here is, uh, again, having shared instructional responsibility between case managers. Again, I kind of already talked about that, just, you know, having the idea that, uh, students can be shared and their support, uh, approach to their support. Uh, in terms of, again, not duplicating services.
And then before I get into the E L L side, I just wanted to say that Brad, coming into this, this role, there's, there's a lot of students that he's at. I think every single meeting and he's going from building to building, he's going offsite. And so, I mean, kudos to Brad for just jumping in, uh, and really being involved and connecting with parents and connecting with our students and our staff, so. Um, as far as the E L L side, um, we have three E, E L program specialists. We have, uh, Mrs. Kipkey, who was at Kelly and Lindtown, uh, Mrs. Beatty at the middle school. She does, um, part of our learning support program and part of her day is, uh, supportive of E L students. And, and then Mrs. Meyer at the high school, um, as part of her day, support our E L students, as well as, um, teaching, uh, German, uh, the other part of her day. Um, today, all three of them were able to go to Professional Development Day over at the I U, um, for, for the region. And I also wanted to show you some numbers, um, for number of students that we have in each building. Um, we've got, um, most of our students, um, at, at Kelly, um, because they're not in a monitoring, um, stage yet. We have twenty-one students there, uh, twenty-six percent of our total, um, and then the other three buildings is very split, it's about twelve. Um, students at each of those, and then twenty-four, most of these are at the high school or at the middle school, they're in monitoring. They've been exited from E L services, but we're still monitoring for them for, uh, for two additional years. And so, um, eighty students overall, but fifty-six getting, uh, more, uh, more support role.
And tell us that means monitoring, but how, how are we doing?
Are they on par, is language any barrier to their learning? And it's simply done through examining their performance academically? Or if for any reason there are any other potential or realized concerns for them? It means they could be returned to direct instruction again, with that word to be the case. So it's a good step that allows them to exit from that level of support services. Social English comes quicker than academic English. And that's the tease it out and make sure. But on that once yearly access test that they take. If they reach the threshold level for exit, they exit to monitoring for a period of time.
And is it our E L L staff that's doing that monitoring?
Yes, yes, they remain their responsibility.
And one of the things we also wanted to look at as part of looking at our English language learners is even their families as well. If they're coming to, to our district, um, from, and not speaking English as their primary language, how do we help them through that process? So, you know, our enrollment processes, do they, are there barriers there that are gonna trip them up and, and how can we offer support? And so, uh, we wanted just over the next, you know, year or two, as, as part of this comprehensive plan, be looking at that perspective and making sure we're supporting them in that, in that process. As well as when they are, our students, making sure that we're supporting them through communication and things like that. Um, moving on to our next objective, um, and Brad, I'm gonna have you stay on there for a little bit, I need you, uh, later on a later slide here. But, um, this objective looks at how do we focus on relationship building, um, and making sure that we have in intentional classroom interactions in our classrooms. intentional classroom interactions in our classrooms. And so that happens in our elementary classrooms by classroom meetings that are taking place. Uh, like a morning meeting that happens in not all of our classrooms, but in definitely in um many classrooms, and we're promoting that as a uh instructional practice to build relationships. Um, our guidance counselors, our school counselors at both uh Kelly and Lindtown do um lunch bunches and also guidance classes in elementary classrooms, um, or actually in their own classroom. Uh, Mrs. Malinow and Mrs. O'Connor have their own classroom where um it's almost treated as a, a special in a way. They're coming to that classroom for a guidance class. Um, and then not just particular students are getting to go to a lunch bunch or an extra time with the counselor. Um, but most of the students in the building themselves are getting opportunity to be a part of a lunch bunch at some point. Um, to have that, you know, smaller group setting uh with the counselor to have some conversation and get their. Uh, at the middle school and high school, we've got an advisory structure there that takes place. Um, and we've, we assign an advisor um for middle school for that year, and they have, they go to there and they do a weekly lesson using our second step SEL curriculum. And at the high school, we assign an advisor and they use an advisor for hopefully that four-year, and that four-year career. Um, we also have teacher facilitated clubs at the middle school and high school. Um, those happen on, on Fridays at the middle school and the high school. I don't know the specific day that it happens, but that uh, they've, they've added this year, uh, the opportunity to be in multiple clubs throughout the year. It's not just one club that you're in for the year. I believe now it's up to three different uh clubs that you can be a part of during the school year. I think it's about to switch up right now. And then you've heard about programs like the Lencru, we've mentioned multiple times before. Uh, our freshmen coming in kind of get uh guided into uh the high school um with some mentors um through a summer program as well as having an assigned Lencru leader um during their freshman year. Uh, we also have student advisory committees as an objectives. Um, and so we wanted to make sure we were doing some student forums. And we've done uh five of them. We did two at the high school, one at the middle school, and one at uh both Kelly and at Lindtown. Um, again, to get that student perspective and that student voice, making sure we're hearing for them, what's going well, uh, what's working well, what, what, what suggestions do they have? And we, we pose those questions around like safety. Uh, do you feel safe at school? Do you feel like you belong at school? Were a lot of those kind of questions. And so I want to give you a couple um summary pieces that we kind of pulled together. Um, our elementary students, um, a- as a whole, we're taking notes and I, I got to listen in and this is, Moser got to join me as well. Um, they, they, they feel supported, they feel like they belong, um, which is a good thing for us to hear. Um, how do we help our newer students, making sure that they feel connected, um, something that they brought to the table? Uh, they feel safe in our buildings. They are comfortable doing Alice drills or emergency drills. We did a, we did a fire drill this week over at Lindtown. Um, they're familiar with our police officers. You guys got to meet a few meetings ago. Um, and so again, we've got good people in place. And one thing they also wanted to bring to the table is make sure we bring cheese strumboli back to the menu. And uh, I believe that is now on the menu going forward.
Do we still have the dippers? Because that was super important.
Uh, this is in addition to the dippers.
I thought they were the same there.
We had to clarify that with Mr. Jones or with the Department of Student Services, but I believe it's on the menu. I don't think it happened quite yet. Um, but it's, it's returning uh momentarily. Again, student voice being very important. Um, at the middle school, we talked more about uh different questions there. Uh, Mr. Sticoles had wanted to really kind of get how advisory time was going and get their perspective on uh the curriculum we use there for, for the SEO. Um, how do those conversations take place? Would it make sense to have some advisor for multiple years? And those questions were asked. And, and there was a good consensus. And again, I was just kind of a fly on the wall, kind of listening into their conversations as as our counselors and our principal kind of led those discussions. Um, they saw value in it, but they also wanted to have more community building activities as a part of those times. Um, and having additional discussion um take place. And so they definitely saw value in it, especially our sixth graders coming in to the middle school, being a new building. They, they, they appreciated that time in their day. Um, at the high school, again, the questions were similar about safety and belonging. Um, they felt like they had someone that they could identify as a trusted adult. And again, variety ways that I mentioned before. Um, we've got lots of opportunities. They mentioned the AP classes. They can find their, their niche or their niches of students to be with. Um, they've got clubs that they can be a part of, uh, and the advisory additional clubs during the day as well as all the different sports that we have. Um, also some things that kind of came about, just kind of, not necessarily a frustration, but we noticed this kind of from this group that maybe some of our students that go to sign ATI, um, we can create a, an email distribution group to make sure that they're getting uh the emails about their senior year, things that are happening here when they're offsite and using their son email address as well as their Lewisburg address to make sure that they're getting those important communications. Uh, and making sure that they're connected to the, to this building, even though they're not um here um in the building with the day-to-day. Also, uh, from the other conversations we had, we found that, actually, this is from the forum the previous year. There's a frustration that some students couldn't print from their device at their house, if they had a home printer. Um, and so we've, we have a tutorial now on the website where students can use that, make sure that they can print at home. Um, but we haven't really advertised that well. So at the beginning of the next school year, we want to make sure that parents and students are aware of how they would be able to add their printer to their student device. Um, and if they're printing at home versus here, that actually would save us money too. And, and again, they need to have a somewhat newer printer that has air print on it. If it's a ten-year-old printer, it might not work, but a newer printer, printers are typically fairly inexpensive, just the ink that's so expensive. Um, but again, having that ability, if they would want to print at home, they can, they can do that. Um, that came from our forums from even the previous year as well. And then uh another objective we had was um putting it on our list to make sure we have professional development on Universal Design for Learning or UDL. Um, if you're not aware of what that is, it's an approach, it's a framework, um, it's a flexible framework. It's kind of saying, if it's good for some students, why don't we provide that to all of our students? Um, and so it's trying to remove some barriers by having some flexibility on how we do assignments and how we um engage in, in content. And so we did a training on this. Kathy, when was it? That was the last school year?
Last year, fall.
Yeah, it was the last school year. And that was all K to five that went, went through that. Um, we had multiple teachers go to the CAST conference, which is kind of the organization uh, not UDL in schools. We have a, is a virtual UDL conference happening this July, and we've got a cohort of teachers that are planning to attend. I have that on my calendar as well. I think Kathy does, um, because again, it's an important initiative that we want to make sure we're aware of and making sure we're putting the things in place um, for our students and for our faculty. And Mr. Richmond standing here so nicely, tell us about your inclusion committee that would also tie into UDL.
Sure. Uh, so basically I'm looking at kind of a two-step approach to uh creating inclusion committees across our buildings and the district. Uh, basically looking at this, I'm starting with the special ed teachers and actually tomorrow during the end service, they're going to be work, working through a survey uh that just gauges their uh comfort level with inclusion, you know, adapting and modifying assignments for students. Uh, inclusion, inclusive approaches uh to education. Uh, it's really, I'm in the information gathering stage to see what our teachers um, feel our needs are in the district and also what we're doing well. So we're kind of looking at, you know, both sides of that, you know, how do we maintain what we've been doing? But how do we also move forward as well and address any needs that may arise along the way? Uh, so basically the idea is they're going to take the, this uh survey, uh, then I'm going to meet with them and kind of just to talk individually. The idea with them, need to bring it back to grade level meetings uh within the building, uh, and have conversations with the special ed staff. Uh, and then the part of next year, which kind of ties right into the UDL cohort, uh, organically, it's already happening. There are regular ed teachers that are coming along saying, hey, I think there's other opportunities to be more inclusive, to, you know, make sure that all students can come into any given regular classroom and work towards the same objective as, you know, this other students that traditionally been in that room. Uh, so it's, it's organically happening, but the idea would be that once we kind of get, you know, the identity of what uh within the special ed department, our inclusive philosophies and practices are going to be, uh, then we'll be able to tie in, bring in our regular colleagues and have that shared, you know, kind of collective identity moving forward uh to best support our students in the most inclusive way possible.
Thank you, Brad. And then our last objective is that we put in our plan was to create a trauma-informed plan. And this past, this current semester, it was assigned probably in February, I believe, with a potential due date of, of uh end of April, um, is for our professional staff to go through um some series on our vector PD, our vector solution site on trauma-informed practices. Um, and again, trauma-informed plan is making sure that we're, our, our staff are aware uh that our students may have experienced trauma and that we should, we should be aware of that and, 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 and plan and instruct accordingly. And we want to put together a trauma-informed plan um with uh counselors and with our administrators. And we've got a template already that we're going to be um starting from and then having that plan to present to faculty um, as well as a plan for professional development around trauma-informed. So um, those are the objectives tied to this specific goal. I wanted to give you that update this evening. But again, this is an open forum, so feel free to ask additional questions on this topic for any of our, our goals so far.
Besides English language learners, are there any other uh smaller cohorts of kids that we're monitoring for? Like performance gaps or they're, like you talked about kids sort of exiting or whatever, like, uh, do, do all kids get monitored if they've exited services?
Well, so indeed. So yeah, I, I guess I can speak from a special ed lens, right? So, um, yeah, the districts, any district across Commonwealth has a child find responsibility. Um, so to seek out, identify students that need services, that's like the district's responsibility for that. Uh, and honestly, what would happen would if we had a student, you know, exit from special education services, which can't happen. It's a huge celebration. I cue the confetti, we play the music, we, we dance and we celebrate, you know, it's a big deal when that happens. Um, none of that happens, but, you know, uh, but the idea is though that we watch and we, 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 we seek that student through our state support systems at the building level. So if we would see that a student sliding back, um, it would be kind of like, you know, the contacts with the regular ed teacher through guidance. It would kind of reactivate our child, uh, child find responsibilities. Uh, so however the cohorts work would be, be going second, the primary to the secondary level is a little different, uh, but it would come back around to considering, you know, additional supports through what we talked about earlier in the MTSSS model. Or possibly, yeah, maybe we have to go back to reevaluation. We try to be very careful with that because the last thing we want to do is have a student leave too early. Generally, it's better to hold on a little longer uh in those cases to make sure, especially if you're looking at transition years. Like I would be very hesitant to dismiss a student making the jump from middle school to high school, you know, within like right at the end of the eighth grade year. I would say, let them go through, let's see how it goes. So you just try to be a little prudent with those aspects. Uh, but it would just go back through those, those child find responsibilities that we have. If we see the student struggling, you know, say they had a specific learning disability in math and they were doing great. That, you know, from fourth and fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade, they had a wall, we would go back and we would look. We do an evaluation and see, you know, whether they're all. But so it's, it's kind of a just cycle back around.
So I don't know if it was three years ago, but we invested a lot to get some new power school uh, systems that would allow us to do a better job tracking because five oh fours weren't transferring building to building and all this stuff. Does everyone remember this? Yeah. Is that working?
So uh special programs is like the offshoot of.
Is this, is this something new? Has something new happened?
It's just the uningenious name.
It's called special programs. It writes special ed documents, five oh fours. Um, so I don't deal in my capacity, my administrative system does more so on the backend, it's like the reporting, kind of connecting things. Um, I've heard from Kathy Swindinger as well as Lisa Smith, my administrative assistant. Uh, it does a nice job carrying over. So we are collecting the data. It's working really well on that aspect in terms of um, kind of different reports and different um communication areas where it needs to go to this website, to this, you know, kind of shared information is working. Um, it does allow uh an easy tracking from grade level to grade level. Uh, so basically we can assign case managers uh for IEPs five oh fours, generally a five oh four is for guidance counselors, IEPs are for special ed teachers. Uh, but it's really just a click of the button, assign, and it sends all the access with all the historical documents to the next, next grade level. Uh, it's also.
So it worked.
Yes, yes. For that purpose, yes. We're, we're still working through some aspects of IEP writing. Um, and we, we've hit some limitations. To fully disclose, we've hit limitations where we're trying to figure out how we make it work with, you know, what was, I wasn't here obviously when they were using the last program uh to this. There's been some like areas where just quality and light things we're working with the company on to, you know, kind of figure out, work around some things. And it hasn't, no, no program's perfect, but yes, for the recording backend, it's worked.
I have one question. I just wondered with the wind time, for students who have GIPs, have gifted IEPs, are they able, I know scheduling the supports for the gifted students is always pick, it's hard because you don't want them to miss things. Has the wind time allowed for some, like are gifted learners allowed to meet in their small groups during that wind time? Like, has that wind time been utilized at all?
It, it has been in terms of like at the teacher level, or, or, or gifted teacher, obviously she carries across multiple buildings.
Right.
Uh, so we haven't been able to target that, like, you know, if we had.
Make it their own.
Yeah, that's been difficult. Um, but we do see a lot of extension activities from regular teachers during that time to kind of just match whatever's being done. Uh, being done in the classroom, but it's not like a, it wouldn't be as structured as that MTSSS time, but you would say
Okay.
With those students, but that's a great question.
I just wondered if, in my head, I was like, huh, I wonder if that helped with that problem at all.
Yeah, I mean, it, 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 it's another opportunity. And they're also engaged in different reading and math activities as well that it extended and contrasted. Because obviously they don't need to target the time. Maybe they extended.
They extended.
Opportunities uh that the other students want quite easier.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, I was just gonna say, my only, I mean, I think it's great, and I've heard only great things since you've come, so like, great, very happy with that. Um, one of the things I think just to keep in mind, um, when we're looking at this and inclusive practices, and I don't see in our district where it's really a huge issue, but it is something that sometimes I think people think about is just the imagery too around when we have people on special education or anybody that's not really part of the general population. Um, so there is a tendency to like unconsciously like exclude special education classrooms like in the basements or in the corners or like it, like it's just something that happens in schools. Like when you start looking for it, that tends to be like something that happens. So just while we're looking at inclusion things, taking that into um consideration, some things to look at too. Like are those classes in an area that it doesn't make sense? Or like a lot of times it might be like that's, and I understand for sensory issues and things too, like every door is open, but then that door is closed, so it's like not as welcoming as other classrooms. So just some of those things could be things to be looked at too. Um, I haven't seen it be a huge issue here, but it is something that like plays into that um, being part of like the building and part of everything. It's just that we're not doing that like seclusionary stuff or like imaging that doesn't, you know, like the classrooms next to like the trash cans or something. And so then it like had the imagery of like being disposable and those types of things. So just, um, just something to put in there in comments.
And we're, and we're fortunate too, because the, the state of those media is very mindful of that. There actually is a process for when you are placing special education classes, you have to get them approved by a state advisor that's assigned to the district.
That's great.
Like you gotta give, you gotta talk about like, you know, it's, it's location in central office, uh, the office, main office, I just said, the building. Um, the size of the room uh in relation to like on grade level peers. So there's like a, there's quite a few checkboxes, so. Um, there's a, there's a nice safeguard to that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, with the ELL, you had mentioned about um s- supports for the parents or looking at that aspect. I don't know if that's necessarily our responsibility, but, but what do we do or what do we have uh referral sources that we can send parents to if they also want to engage in that? You know, English as a second language sort of curriculum.
Um, yeah, there, there, we can definitely refer them to outside agencies as well, and where, where are some of those? But I was talking more about that and our enrollment process, like um making sure that things are in their language to be able to enroll.
That's right.
Um, and if they're coming into the building that, uh, because we have a computer there for enrollment purposes, we can walk them through. Our website has a spot in the left-hand corner where you can change to a language for, I think it's about fifty different languages, you can translate it. But I want to make sure that our enrollment documents also have the same capability. And I'm not sure that they have the same thing that our website itself does. So um, and then also just waiting when they're coming in the door, making sure that we have somebody there that can kind of support them in that process. If it is having a translator, um, we can, we can bring close by to have that conversation. And so that they're not feeling like they're, they're, they're lost. And so we can help them in that process.
One thing is I'm, I'm still noticing a lot of PDFs that are printed from Word and then scanned in, you know, and you see things.
You know, you see things take slightly skier with gray stuff in the corners. And when you do the file conversion, like it's you're in Word, right? You can save as PDF, right? And then that allows you to control F. It also allows you to translate, right? Cause it can bring it back into Word, even if we posted a PDF. But if we do the scanning thing, it's not possible. So I think we really need to be careful because I still see a lot of scanned documents.
I think it's kind of professional development on our staff, make sure they're aware of how to do that. So we get to the point.
For um I E P meetings, if the parents don't have a native English short need. Cause I E P meetings are pretty technical. Um, are you able to support with the translation in-house? Or are we seeking support outside the district for that?
So generally, this year, just my experience, uh, most of have been Spanish speakers. And we're very fortunate because my administrative assistant is Spanish speaking, uh, so then she has like the vocabulary being familiar with school settings. Cause it's it'd be quite difficult to come in and translate some of those pieces. So she's able to do that. Uh, she helps out in all the buildings, what we did, we just kind of scheduled, you know, her into those. Um, if there were to be, um, you know, a language that we couldn't support outside of Spanish. Uh, there are translating services that we could look into. Uh, my, I had never used them directly as an administrative role, but in the past as a teacher and learning support. Um, you would be just entering a meeting with them and you would just have like would be my fellow man. Okay, so say you have this with Mandarin or you know whatnot, you would be, you would just call it. So if you have the capacity, it just would be, you know, see, I'd have to see historically who Lewisburg's worked with and you know. Maybe they go that out or find a provider for that service with that, with that. Only Spanish speaking this year.
I have one more comment, just something that I observed, which I think is great. So I was at career day and there was um a little. Boy that came and was talking to another mom that was there who has a child that has a disability. And that little boy said like to her like, oh, I first felt really bad for this kid, but now I see all the things they can do. And I see how they're part of our class and all of these. And I think that that was just such a great thing to see. And we're like, the inclusion is so important for everybody because like that's definitely going to form like that little boy's like. Going forward and his interactions with people with like some pretty significant disabilities. So I mean, I do think like just hearing that is really great. And like I do think that we are doing a really great job with that.
And we have very curious peers that want to know why their friends have certain needs that they have. Uh, April is autism awareness month. I mean, you have uh special day elementary levels, some speakers that were working on scheduling to come in. And either for grade levels or specific classrooms coming to share about, you know, their kinds of autism, what that means and. How maybe they experience the world a little differently. So we we like to kind of shed that light when we can. So I think it's a great point.
And to that point, I'll mention as well that the I U has a professional development, community engagement series that they are sponsoring. And they're hosting it here at Lewisburg High School. Um, and Ben Hart Grampf is coming on April twenty fourth. Um, for that event, he's speaking here in our auditorium. Um, and you can get tickets for free online or just show up at the door. Um, but again, it's out to the community. We shared it on Facebook and it got a lot of different shares from um community agencies as well. And so I I know Brad, myself and Kathy are planning on being there um for that event. So you're also welcome to be there as well.
I saw Ben at the uh transition conference, but the I U, that's us for him a couple of weeks ago. Uh, he has a remarkable story. He uh advises with the Philadelphia Eagles for their inclusive practices. Cause the owner's brother has autism, so they're very like tuned into that. So he's a really cool story from that aspect. He's also been on like the Price is Right in Atlin and he's just a great guy. I got to meet him before he spoke. Uh, but he has a tremendous story and it leaves you um. Really thinking about what inclusion is and how impactful it is for those individuals with disabilities. But it also leaves you with a greater sense of how it impacts your school community when you're ultimately inclusive. You you see everyone within that saving land. So that's my selling point beyond what they've said, uh, come check it out. He's phenomenal.
Do you not have any other questions?
I have a question not related to this.
Oh, so you get to sit down there, Mia. We've had you catch up there long enough. Thank you so much.
Brad.
Thank you.
It's more than talk. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. He has done an amazing job coming in and working. We appreciate.
Thank you.
Uh, I wanted to know if we've ever in the past or uh have considered developed education programs.
I think the C S I U has quite a few offerings and we also have sign points um locally. I don't know.
Yeah, a little back to, I don't know who asked about um services for parents, but I U has E L L. Um, for adults. And continuing um with classes to get your G D D.
Yeah.
At the career LinkedIn in Sunbury and the E L L is at Milton, Union County Public Library and Sunbury in this area.
I know Sun does sometimes. I know at one point they were doing a um. You know, like think of the offer of the country, the third one too sometimes.
You're thinking of us being a host site, even if we're not.
I mean, the facilities are here, right? So just uh the idea that, and and maybe it's more about thinking. Of surveying the community if there are needs out there that our communities specifically has. Whether it's, you know, people that want to learn Excel or, you know, just things that we might be able to offer. Here close to home for people. Um, that that, you know, would be nominally need perhaps just to cover the cost of the instructor. Um. I know we just do that in one part.
There were also efforts for a while to get more presence of community colleges in the area. So there's the location in Watson Town, there's stuff in Sunbury. They're different, they're not even our counties of community colleges, but there's satellite locations of other counties, community colleges. So some of them do have more of those short course types of things. You mentioned Excel, that's what I I noticed. That's one of the ones.
And I maybe started to get, right? I I don't know what, I I think it would be a, you know, we'd have to just figure out. That's bears of faith in these beautiful facilities. They usually sit empty at night, so. Can be able to offer.
I was saying, not this building.
Yeah, so.
Some of those like short, like if you're not like. I I know, um, when I was in high school, one, we had like an extension of like a lion's slum. That was like the lionesses or like something or lions trainer or something. And they actually took on that with like working with seniors that did like, if there was people that were wanting more computer skills, it's like that, like just like basic.
Yeah.
And then there was like an advisor that like blended.
Yeah, yeah. We have knitting things, but just, you know, there were all kinds of just new kind of things. And I know our public library is pretty handy and does a lot of that stuff too, uh, which is something. Another way to engage the community that's not, that offers a service with, you know. That they pay for these facilities that really doesn't cost us.
There were no citizens comments on anything, right? You know, there's anything floating around?
I can check again, but. No.
We didn't do director's comments earlier, so we can open it up if there's anything else that's there on, you know, people's minds.
I just want to give a kudos to Edwin Hormer for the career day. Like that was really a great event. Like just yeah, somebody that went in, like it was a very well organized event. Like I was kind of terrified once I really thought about how many kids were coming through. But it was, I mean, it was set up really nice. Like it was really like, and I think encouraging for people to come back because not everybody there is connected with. The schools, like they reached out and found other people. So I think that was a really great event and the setup of it was really fantastic and. It seemed to run flawlessly. I'm not sure if behind the scenes it did, but it definitely seemed to be that way. So she gets like a million kudos for that. It was great.
I I don't have anything tonight. I'm grateful for the presentation though. Thank you.
I'll put a plug in for tomorrow night. The gym is being used for the P hack All Stars basketball games, both boys and girls. So if anyone wants to come out and watch a basketball. It's been, I guess they haven't done it for like five years um through COVID and it's coming back tomorrow night.
I thought Extravans was amazing as well. Uh, I wonder, what class are you all here for?
Um, we're here um for our family's home community class and it's an assignment to just come to the schoolward and. Really do a little.
Are you all education majors?
Yes.
Had you already heard about universal design for learning and trauma informed practices?
I feel like trauma.
Yeah.
Learning by learning by design.
Yeah, learning by design. No, they're not the same. Universal design for learning is like, everyone can use a ramp, but not everyone can use stairs. So why not just always build the ramp? Right, that's that's the most common metaphor that's used for universal designs for learning. Yeah.
I just want to say thank you for being invited to the counselor's breakfast.
That was very sad to miss that.
Yeah, really was.
All right. Well, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. And the science. And this Hannah's on. Thank you very much.